I'm sorry, the dates, um, I did not update, I'm sorry about that. I could not find them when I first looked for them. And things to be of note, our general fund, we do have more expenditures than we have revenues coming in, but, um, that is, um, in the, um, customary fashion, the, um, revenues come in at different times. And so there's a portion of the year where we are going through, um, where we use our reserves until property tax and, um, more of the sales tax come in. At this point, we have not been affected, um, too badly for, um, sales tax. It's been about even as to what it had been prior to COVID, um, nineteen and the, um, shelter in place orders. And all of our funds, except for the funds that are, um, reimbursable grants, are all, um, in the nice pretty blue that we have. That shows that we have a positive, um, we are positive in over and under. Um, our, some are, you know, a little bit less than what we'd like to see at this point in the year. Just, um, to note for our water revenues are down and that has to do with the executive order by the governor not to, um, do shut offs. And, um, our current shut offs are approximately, uh, sixty thousand. And, uh, with our continued balance or our, um, current balance about forty thousand. So, um, we did start this month, um, by sending out, um, nice reminder notes that your bill is past due and that we are willing to work with you to, um, bring your account current. And we seem to be receiving quite a few calls with people very interested in that. So hopefully we'll see a decrease in our delinquent accounts, um, very soon. So, um, uh, and not for the utility bills. And that is because the, um, policy for the CARES Act funding is not, is basically not to repay yourself. So we can't give people money to pay us back. So that's just basically, um, a circle, um, in, so, um, but there is funding. I know that Fernando had submitted, um, grants with CDBG to assist, um, our customers in paying their water, uh, their utility bills. As, um, also KCAO, uh, has, uh, a program to assist people in paying their utility bills. Certainly, I believe that, um, Tony, I don't know if you could answer this, if there's a flyer that's gone out or is posted on our website, um, telling people that they can contact, um, KCAO in order to get help for their, um, their water bills. But we could, if, um, there is not one, we can post one. And then I'm sure that once this grant goes through for assistance through the CDBG grants, that something will be posted on the website. Certainly. Yes, and I was going to further add that I'm sure that we could put something in the next billing cycle, a flyer in the utility bills that, um, points them to the direction of being able to get that assistance that it, that they need.
Yeah, I would like to see that, uh, you know, those individuals that are delinquent, so they can get that information, so they can take advantage directly from KCAO or an agency at the coming level.
Yes, that is, uh, definitely a priority to get that assistance out there. And another note, um, to bring to your attention, our water or our street funds, um, are doing very well. But we are trying to put money, um, enough money together so that we can do one project at a time. So, um, it's currently about two point six, two point seven million dollars right now. Um, but we are getting ready to start, to start, um, a road project here very shortly. They're gearing up for that and it should be, uh, it's going to take care of the, um, west end of San Joaquin. So, and I'm sure that, um, Scott will have that in his report to talk about that. Um, as I said, our, um, some of our, um, funds that are, um, waiting for reimbursement. One is our, it's a small amount, but our, um, City of Avonale Operating Authority. And that is, um, done through a check that we basically pay from the hospital district to the city and that will be done, um, regularly. Let's see, um, we have our community center project that we are waiting for reimbursement from as well as, um, our solar grants, our water transmission lines are rather, um, large amounts. And, um, I believe we're still waiting for funding back from our tree partnership grant. So, um, but this is in small in a nutshell. And, um, I was, if you have any questions, otherwise I'm sure you want to get into your business of the day.
Just, you know, a few little questions. When is expected that, that we get these funds, the ones that we're waiting for reimbursement? Is there like a certain period of time that, you know, for us to get them back?
For general fund or for, um, the reimbursements?
The reimbursements.
And they come in, um, they're about six weeks behind from the point where they, um, disbursement request is processed until the state pays us. We just received a large amount of funding from, um, the solar project. Uh, and that went right back out to pay the, um, vendor, or not the vendor, but the contractor. So, um, and that's a regular, uh, Fernando does most of the other grants. I handle the solar for, or the solar grant. So, um, as he processes his disbursement and that's based on invoicing from the various contractors, then the payment is processed and, um, generally what happens is we make the payment first and then we wait for the reimbursement and it's just a continual cycle. But it's about a six week wait.
Okay. And, you know, because I know, I know we have all these delays on funding and, you know, the money's not coming in as, as usual. Are you particularly concerned about the finances or do you think we're doing okay?
I think we're doing okay. Um, things will be much better once December comes and the, um, sales, or the property tax come in and the vehicle licensing fees, those are our two big, um, sources of revenue for general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So that will conclude our study session. And for the record, it's five eighteen. So at this time we'll start regular meeting.
Do you have a pleasure of the Legion?
Yes.
Here.
The United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To roll call please.
Councilman Fernandez?
Here.
Councilman Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Priscilla?
Here. We leave our councilwoman, Dalulu, Congresswoman, to be here at five thirty?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we're going to, uh, would you please, uh, read the statement?
Sure. Government codes such in five hundred and ninety-five to company members of the city council successfully. I am therefore receiving a total of three hundred per month because of being elected to the city council. Lady Sima, are they compensated for our city and member successfully?
Thank you. At this time we're going to close session. And the reporter for our session, if we have anything to disclose. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Priscilla, there was a late.
We got a little bit of a state late start.
It is going on, a little busy, but especially doing, um, covering the Melissa and doing my regular job and so it's.
Take your next effort.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I went home last night, I was exhausted. Like I just want to go home and go to bed. Yes, very much so.
I would like seeing the list of participants.
For the record, we are of a close session, it's 5:37, and we're going back to our regular city council meeting. We have nothing to report out of our close session. Before we go into item number five, consent calendar, just received a letter of support from Jose Gutierrez, who is the chief operating officer for the Westlands Water District. And they're actually asking for a letter of support. And it reads as it says, "The City of Avonale has a disadvantaged community, understands that Westland Water District Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Westland GSA is applying for funding from the California Department of Conservation Watershed Coordinator Program, aimed to encourage sustainable management of groundwater resources that support the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, SGMA. And has the City of Avonale understand that funding will be utilized for monitoring of interim milestones, measurable objective, and minimum threshold sustainability indicators aligned in Westland Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. The watershed position will facilitate monitoring efforts that are consistent with the program protocols and support watershed activities, which ensure that adaptive management processes can be applied. Therefore, the City of Avonale support Westland GSA application in the effort to ensure waterhead monitoring and assessment protocols are conducted and implemented to support Westside Sub Basin sustainability. So thank you for giving the City of Avonale the opportunity to support the proposed program, and we hope that California Department of Conservation gives grateful consideration for approval." So I believe I'm going to need a motion in a second to add it to the agenda. This is a time-sensitive application process, and we would like to add it to the...
An emergency item?
As an emergency item.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to add this item as an emergency item for the letter of support for Westland Water District.
So we have a first and a second. Would you roll call, please?
Councilman Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Preciado?
Aye. So we have three, one absent. She probably be, she'll be late, but I believe we have a... So with that, we're going to item number five, which is a consent calendar. And the first item is to consider the City of Avonale approval of minutes for September 10, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes, or do we need to amend it?
I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes.
I will.
So we have a first and a second.
Councilman Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Preciado?
Aye. So for the record, we passed three, all, one absent.
Thank you.
So we'll move over to item number six. Mayor and councilmember items for consideration. The first one would be to consider appointment of the new mayor pro team. Discussion and action. Now, if you want to take a second?
Yes, mayor members of council. Mayor Glenda Woolley resigned from the city council on September 10th, which has created a vacancy. And her particular, this particular term of office will expire in November of 2020. The government code, section 36512, sets the procedures for filling vacancies for elected city offices. Section 365112B gives two specific statutory options for the city council. If a vacancy occurs in an appointed office provided for in this chapter, the council shall fill the vacancy by appointment. A person appointed to fill a vacancy holds office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent. If a vacancy occurs in an elective office provided for in this chapter... If a vacancy occurs in an elective office provided for in this chapter, the council shall, within sixty days from the commencement of the vacancy, either fill the vacancy by appointment or call a special election to fill the vacancy. Section three, six, five, one, two C allows the city to adopt its own ordinance designating the specific method to follow, which would allow additional options over and above the statutory scheme. However, due to time constraints, an ordinance would not be in place in time to meet the sixty day deadline to make a decision under section three, six, five, one, two B. Therefore, the city is required to follow the statutory requirements. If the city council desires to fill the vacancy by appointment, the appointment must be made within sixty days of the council seat becoming vacant. However, with the election being less than sixty days away, it will be council's decision whether to advertise and fill the vacancy or not fill, and let the voters decide on November third, two thousand twenty.
Just to clarify, that's actually item six B.
Yes.
And I think we still need to fill vacancy on six A. For the mayor pro tem.
Yes.
So I will let Angie to open nominations.
I open nominations for mayor pro tem. Oh, sorry.
We'll nominate Alex Ramirez for the position of mayor pro tem. Do we have any other nominations?
Can I have any close nominations? I need a second.
So we, close nominations?
You got a close nomination. Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez.
Aye.
Councilman Preciado. Um, Mayor Preciado.
Aye.
We have a new mayor pro tem, it will be Mr. Ramirez.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now we're moving to item six B, and Don went through the whole protocol. So just take discussion will be the pleasure of council.
And I personally think if the elections are, you know, a little
So close.
It's so close, you know, month away. We should probably leave the vacancy if there's no, you know, legal trouble we can run into. You know, I think it would be, we should let it up to the voters to fill out the vacancy.
And the good news is, I believe we have nine candidates running for in council in November. It will be the best move.
So the direction is to leave it for the voters?
I agree.
Yeah, there's no legal problem with leaving it open. It's very close right now. To be honest with you, there's a lot of paperwork that goes into it, someone to be in there, so.
Okay. Applications, interviews.
Seven hundred four.
Okay, so that's been settled, too. So we move over to item six C, which is twenty twenty hunger awareness month proclamation.
We have a an agenda item for hunger awareness month, and I believe Jeff Garner is here to speak to this for declaring the month of September as the hunger awareness month and allow the mayor to sign and with the approval of council.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. Would this be the appropriate time for me to say a few words, or would that need to wait?
Yes, this is the proper time.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and good evening, council members, and good evening, staff. And my name is Jeff Garner, and I have the the fortunate opportunity to be serving as the executive director of King's Community Action Organization. We are a private nonprofit organization that has been serving the communities of Kings County since nineteen sixty-five. And one of the main services that we have and has definitely been utilized during this pandemic time is a food bank. We provide food distribution to all communities here in Kings County. And even before the pandemic, before COVID nineteen, food insecurity was a top need in Kings County. And then when you layer on top of that now, the pandemic, where you have health concerns, you have economic concerns, the need for our food bank has been very drastic. And I'm sure that either, you know, you've seen it or heard, but are the food lines that we are now serving, and this has been going on for the last six, seven months, they are nearly triple the size that they were before COVID nineteen hit. So I do appreciate that the council takes this proclamation up for consideration, really to show your support for the efforts, and not only KCIO, but all the different food pantries that are working hard to serve the city of Avonale, the people of Avonale. And so we definitely appreciate the partnership that we've had with the city. We appreciate the volunteers who come out and support our food distributions. We do have two food distributions that are coming up in October. We've been averaging two food distributions a month. So the next one will be October ninth, and then we'll do another one October twenty-third, and it's at nine AM at, in the high school parking lot. So we do appreciate the opportunity that you're giving us tonight, but also we appreciate the opportunity that you've given us, really for several years now, to have this partnership and to be able to support our efforts in serving the good people of Avonale. So thank you for this consideration tonight.
This is just for a motion. So do we have a motion to what six, September, about twenty twenty hunger awareness month proclamation? I believe that I was looking for the commission.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to recognize September twenty twenty as hunger action month for the City of Avonale.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor, how are you? How are you, Mayor Preciado?
Many changes.
Councilwoman Garizales.
Aye.
Thank you. So fast for all. Thank you. Is that, we'll go into item six B, which is consider resolution resigning the rules and reorganization of the city council as adopted April twenty nineteen eighty-two and establish new policies and procedure for appointment of the mayor-mayor pro tem. Discussion and action.
Mayor and members of council, a draft resolution was brought to you at the last meeting on September tenth. After a lengthy discussion, council requested that this that a draft resolution be brought to, brought back to you at tonight's meeting in final form for consideration of adoption. We'd like to point out one change to the document after discussing the resolution with the mayor. He had suggested the wording in item number five be amended as follows. The mayor and mayor pro tem shall hold the offices for two years. The draft resolution, which council reviewed it on September tenth, stated that it shall hold the office for one year. So other than this one noted change, the resolution remains the same.
But I believe it was amended back to two years.
Yes, that's what it says, is two years. Shall hold the office for two years.
And also to make clear, item number ten would be removed after November.
Yes. Well, wait a minute.
So after that, it won't be, it won't have any impact after that. It will still be part of the legislation.
It will still be part of the decision?
Yeah, I mean, it will be. Item ten
Will be removed?
Item ten can be removed and make the policy effective immediately. The only, so the only issue is, and I have an attorney general opinion nineteen eighty-four for the public record, it's in eighty-eight twelve of the California Attorney General. The appointment of the mayor is obviously something that the council does. It's not an elective protection. And so this opinion from the attorney general interprets the government code section three, six, eight, zero, one, and it basically says that the council can at any time appoint a mayor for whatever term, and you move them after everything. But there's only one real requirement. The statute says that after an election takes place, when you, when the item comes to the council to Thank you. When, when, when the item comes to the council on the agenda for what's called the declaration of election results, that's when you cert, when you get certification from the county elections officer, and then you say, yes, we accept these results, and they become final. At that point, this statute says that you have to select a mayor at that point. But the opinion says that you can change who that mayor is at any time. You can put a term on them, you can leave it for an indefinite term. So there's a lot of latitude. It's a good idea to have a policy, a written policy in place. So this is a good thing. But in terms of when it goes into effect, you, you can control that. The only issue is that after each election year, you want to select a mayor, you can, when the, when the time comes, you can select the person who's sitting as mayor at that point. You don't have to change the mayor at that point, because that's ultimately your authority. The opinion makes clear that the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. That means that that, that hat, that position, it's not, again, it's not elected, it's appointed, is, is at will, basically, of the council, a majority of the council. Does anyone have questions about that?
I think the whole idea of this changing of amending the resolution from nineteen eighty-two, so it was to take away the status of that, that the mayor or mayor pro tem will not be removed from his position until after the two-year term. So, so at that time, we had a plenty of discussion. We believe that as elected officials, we really need to listen to the community. And instead of the community going through the whole process of a recall with the mayor or mayor pro tem and not serving the community or council as he is obligated to do so, he can be removed from that position. So I felt that he was, he was a secure position for two years, no matter what. So that's why I thought it was, it was necessary to have, if council appointed mayor or mayor pro tem, council should have the authority to remove at any given time. So I believe that's what needs to be stated. So nobody's protected from not doing his job. He can be removed at any time. And so that's the whole idea.
Pretty much, that was the whole idea, all along, you know, listening to the community. They wanted for, for council to be able to reorganize at any time if they were not happy with the, with the leadership that was in place. You know, after many months of discussion, we're, we're coming to this. But I, you know, I think that this is a good policy to have in place, given that it gives the person sitting on the, on the mayor position a higher standard on, on, on what the mayor should be doing.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, one thing I would add is that, as you mentioned, the recall, there's no, the public has no say in recalling a mayor. They have a say in recalling the councilman who's wearing the mayor hat. They can recall that person through an election. And if that person gets recalled through, during, during an election, and the results are certified and all of that, then obviously they can't hold the mayor hat anymore, because they can't even hold the council's seat. But there's no, there's no election for a recall for a mayor.
Okay, so yeah, to make it clear, so the mayor-mayor pro tem are appointed by council, so they can be removed by council, but not by the community. But the main point, if as elected officials, we're supposed to listen to the community. So if the community has a base to reorganize and council see it necessary, then they can take the next step and reorganize. And actually, that's what I've been trying to call reorganize, not remove. Because, you know, we're just, you know, we should serve at the same level as the council member, mayor pro tem or mayor. You know, we should give a hundred percent immediately to the community. So with that said, uh
And one last point, number five, it says it's a two-year term, but immediately after that, it says it's at the pleasure of the council. So then it's reaffirming that this is at will. And it says it continues on unless removed pursuant to majority vote. So you just still maintain that power under this resolution.
Okay. We just wanted to make that clear. So do we have a motion to accept the amendments to the resolution?
It'll be twenty twenty forty-one.
Forty-one?
Yes.
So do we have, do I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty forty-one?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty forty-one.
We have a first and a second.
Councilman Hernandez.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez.
Aye.
Mayor Preciado.
Aye.
Councilmember Garizales.
I'll have to sing from this one. I don't have a very interesting one.
Okay, so we have our three, one station votes, and I believe the resolution passes with a three, one extension. Thank you. So we go to item six B, which is consider resolution with, no, we keep that one already. So we'll go over to item number seven, which is activity reports and special presentations and committee reports. The first one will be Avonale Police Department Chief Tivers.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council have the August monthly report before you. You have it in your packet. Just want to highlight a few of the cases that we had to deal with over the month, kind of quite a busy month. At the bottom of the first page, we were dispatched to a burglary in progress in the five hundred block of East Monterey Street. And the, the victim had noticed a person inside her residence from her video camera system that she has installed inside. And officers got there. They found a person running away from the scene. That person was described to possibly have a handgun with him earlier in the day and at the scene of the burglary in progress. And K-9 gunner was deployed in the alley and apprehended the suspect without further incidents. So we're glad, no gun was found. Luckily, we're glad for that. The suspect was booked for burglary, terrorist threats, and along with a gang enhancement. We also, in the, like, Telerian Seventh Street area, we located a AR fifteen assault rifle, a nine millimeter handgun ammunition for both firearms, along with some high-capacity magazines for the assault rifle. That suspect was booked for a variety of felony weapons charges. Also, located another loaded shotgun from a person that lived in Kettleman City that was driving around Avonale. Driver was booked for weapons and some gang charges as well. But worked, worked with the Vacaville Police Department, California Highway Patrol from the Solano Area Office a couple of times regarding the same runaway juvenile from Avonel that kept getting released back here and stealing family members' vehicles and driving back to the area. So we, we were busy working with that. And the last, the bottom of page two is kind of concerning, going over the pass down that I went out, I used to compile this, there were several calls service for missing children that had small children that had wandered pretty far away from their residences. You know, like to thank the community for calling us to take over and trying to locate the parents and some counseling was given to the parent, so once again, thank you to the community for that. And then, as approved in the February twenty twenty meeting, our use of force option simulator was installed and it's up and running. This will keep us in compliance with Senate Bill fourteen twenty-one, the use of force bill that was passed last January. And it's complying with Penal Code Section thirteen five nineteen, which requires our officers to train in the de-escalation of situations, which we already do, we already did, but this, this system, as you might recall, has about eight hundred and fifty different scenarios. Has a mental health component to it and allows the computer operator to change the scenario based on how the officer reacts. So we're, we're hoping that maybe one of these days in the near future, council, maybe community members can come and go through the simulator to, to see what it's all about. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the Public Works Department, Scott Davis, Rob Williams and his crew, their crew. They made the modifications in the very, very west, west wing, very west room of the west wing of the, the police department. So we have this device set up there, they had to black out the windows and they removed some cabinetry and they installed a in-window air conditioner to keep the computer equipment cool, so they did that in about three days' notice, which is typical of the work that they do, three days' notice, and they got it done for the Monday where the, the trainer came out from Michigan, so couldn't have done it without them. So if Scott and Rob are on the call, please pass it on to your, your people. I'll close out with, during the month of August, obviously, we had some, a power outage in town, it was significant time, not as bad as some other neighboring cities due to a lightning strike. And we, we had some possibility of some other rolling type blackout due to the heat advisory, so been working with PG&E quite a bit, we're involved with their Public Safety Power Shut-off Program as well. I should have a conference call tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock about that. So hopefully didn't inconvenience anybody for too long, I know I did roll out there and it was pretty dark out there. Just talking to residents, just trying to, everybody was trying to pass time, so. Anyway, that's, that's all I have, anybody have any questions?
Questions, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So with that, we'll go over to, say, a community development planning activity report for number seventy-one.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Just a quick update here about what the Community Development Department has been up to over the last month or so. As you know, the council approved the CDBG application that we submitted this week on Monday for about eighty-seven thousand dollars for assistance to the community with utility bills. So that's something that we expect the state to, to review and turn around pretty quickly, given the urgency of the situation. We are continuing to work with local businesses that are looking to obtain funding from the county from their business assistance program, and we're very happy to report that as of earlier this week, I received a report from the JTO, the Executive Director of the EDC, JTO. And he let me know that our efforts to get the word out and to help businesses have paid off, where all the funds that were allocated to Avonel have already been obligated. And about, as of Monday, about fifty-six thousand of those funds have already been distributed or a check has been, has been cut, ready to be distributed. So the rest of the applications are in process, I think, as of Monday, they, they had about twenty. I know our staff has been working this week still to get more applications in, and we've gotten about two or three more, so they should have about twenty-two applications from Avonel, and I know the county is considering, based on their Board of Supervisors meeting this week, that, considering reallocating some of the unincorporated areas funds, which haven't been really too active in terms of businesses applying for those funds. So we're in a really good position, and I, I'd like to thank my staff, Tony and Community Activities, definitely Maria Cabrera from the Police Department and, and helping get the word out. You know, the ground game, as Lance from the EDC told us, in Avonel was very effective, so we're very appreciative of everyone who participated in getting that out. Moving on here, I, I do want everyone to, you know, be aware that we are working with a developer at the hundred-twenty lot residential subdivision that's moving forward with their, with their housing. They're moving at a very quick pace and we're just trying to keep up. We just got back the approved plans for their, for the first five, for their five models, floor plan, looking really nice. And so we're continuing to work with them on, on a few different things. One thing, I think I've reported on this before, but we are working with the Amigo Market owner, Adnan Obaid, to help him with his plans of constructing a new grocery store on Skyline at the side of the beverage. It's basically Skyline and Kings. And so he would, he would be tearing down the beverage. Right now, we have an, an issue with Caltrans where they're requesting additional easement off of Skyline and, and they're looking at making Adnan maybe give Caltrans some additional rideaway and make some other improvements to the sidewalk, but Caltrans is going to be out to the field here in Avonel in a, in a couple of weeks, hopefully, so that we can go over that. We're, we're being very proactive in trying to work, be the liaison between Caltrans and, and this business owner, because we think this is going to be a great project for the community, so hopefully we can get that under construction pretty soon. And just a couple other things here, I think I mentioned before that our five million dollar application for our eighteen-inch water transmission line replacement project has been approved, and it's just making its way through the last kind of legal processes at the state, and we're going to be having a kickoff call here pretty soon to, to get that construction process started. And let's see, a couple other things here, we are working on a, on a, on a apartment complex on Seventh Avenue that a local property owner is looking to develop. We sent out the environmental review documents to the state, got one comment back from one of the state agencies, which is a, was a very, you know, general comment kind of standard. And we, so we're very happy with kind of how that's progressing and we're trying to help this, this property owner get under construction here pretty soon to add some additional housing units to the community, so we're very excited about that. And let's see, a couple other things here, we are very excited that this week we kicked off our permitting, licensing and code enforcement project with Open Gov that the council approved, I, I believe at the last meeting, which is going to give the community the ability to apply for permits online, to pay for permits online, to track the status of their permits, and basically all the projects that we have going on in the community. And it's just going to make things so much easier for development, especially for housing, which is a big, a big need right now in the community. So we're very excited to get that wrapped up by the beginning of the new year, so hopefully by February, we'll have worked down all the kings and we'll be ready to open that up to the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yes, was the location for the sixteen unit apartment complex on Seventh Avenue exactly?
So, yeah, it's the property just north of Hearthstone Apartments on Mendocino and Seventh, so right across from the new church that's on that corner.
Well, the empty corner lot before that.
Yeah, it's about a one-acre parcel, correct.
Would that, giving improvement on Mendocino since right now still closed?
Uh, so he wouldn't have to improve any part of Mendocino to access his property, because it's paved all the way to the end of, basically to the other entrance of Hearthstone. So, yeah, there wouldn't be any improvement to Mendocino there.
The other question I had on the sewer and water for the hundred and twenty residential homes, the sewer will be going straight, straight down to the sewer plant or will be connected to Kern or Hanford Avenue?
Yeah, so there, the homes that are going to be facing Kern Street, their sewer is going to run into Kern, to the sewer there. And then there's going to be a line that runs all the way down Corcoran to Salem Avenue, so Salem is not a, a developed road at this time, but they're working on acquiring easements to be able to put the sewer line down Corcoran all the way to Salem, which would then head out west to thirty-three and then tie into our system there. So it wouldn't go directly to our wastewater treatment plant, but it would tie into a sewer, to a manhole over at Highway thirty-three, going down Corcoran and then west on Salem.
Will that be on a gravity flow or will require a lift station?
That would be gravity, gravity flow, yeah, they have plenty of fall down there.
Thanks.
Good question.
Fernando?
Another question.
There are no more questions, so thank you, Fernando, for your report.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So with that, we go into special presentations. We have a pavement management system, twenty nineteen, twenty update. All right, Margaret.
Yep.
You there?
Yes, Adam, can you hear me?
She is, now we can.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor and council members, I have a short presentation to share with you today to talk about the pavement management system. This was a project that was, that began with the Kings County Association of Governments, and in addition to the county in Avonel, we also looked at some of the other cities, Hanford, Lemoore, et cetera. So what this short presentation is going to do is, again, share with you sort of the condition of the roads in Avonel and some of the funding analysis that we did, so that we could, I'll help educate you in, in any of the budget decisions that you may be facing coming up. So next slide, please. So just to kind of give you a quick background, you know, we, we look at pavement management system as a, a computer tool, of course, and there are many academic sort of definitions for it, but I like to think of a pavement management system as helping city staff and the council answer these kind of questions, you know? How many roads or how many streets in my city, is it in good or bad condition, you know, what kind of repairs are needed, when are they needed, how much do we need to maintain it? And we don't just look at it today, but we look at it next year, the next ten years, and then we, we look at different funding scenarios to see what the impacts of those different budget levels are. So next slide. And, and by the way, if there are any questions along the way, just let me know. So one of the first things I like to share is to give you a feel for the total value of the street network. So Avonel has about thirty-two point seven miles of roads, and they, we, we classify them into arterials, which are the higher volume roads, the collectors, and then the residentials. And each one of these have what we call a PCI associated with them, go ahead and hit the next slide. So the point of this slide is not that, you know, with, there's lots of numbers associated with the street number of miles, but that there's a value associated, and that's forty and a half million dollars. And I want you to think of this asset value as, you know, if we had a disaster happen, a humongous flood, an earthquake, and we, and the city had to rebuild all, every single street, it would cost in the order of forty million dollars. So that tells you that as a publicly owned asset, it's a large number of public dollars, you know, already invested in this network. So the point of, that I'm trying to make here is, well, what do we need to do to maintain this asset? Next slide. So one of the first things we try to do is we look at the pavement condition index or the PCI, and you can think of this as, it's a scale that goes from zero to a hundred, where a hundred would be perfect, you know, it's brand new, it's the day after the contractor builds the street, it's smooth, it's black, and it's beautiful. And of course, very poor fail would be where the street has started to fall apart. And, and what we want to do then with this information is, you know, put a number on where the different PCIs are. And the network, the average PCI for the city, for every single street is forty-seven, and I want you to pause here for a second. When people ask, you know, what is a good PCI to be at, I usually give them the example of my daughter, you know, she's in high school, and, and every parent treats the kids differently. If my daughter were to come home and tell me, I got a forty-seven on my math test, well, you know, parents can react differently. As a, one parent may say, you know what, you have to work a little bit harder, that's not going to be quite good enough for you to get to college. Another parent might say, you know what, that's okay, you know, it's acceptable, I was never a good math student, you're not going to need math much anyway, that's fine. So my point to you, because you are the policymakers for the city, is what you want to do with this number is entirely up to your policies. What I'm here today is to share with you the ramifications of those decisions that you will make, and it's particularly what those financial decisions are. So if you look at these numbers in this pie chart, the forty-seven, when we start teasing it out, your arterials are actually in decent shape, they're at seventy. And that's kind of it, right under the threshold between good and very good. Your collectors and residentials, however, are not so good, they're in the poor category. And what the pie chart shows is that about one-third of your roads are in good or very good shape, so you do have good roads, and that, that's the good news. But unfortunately, the remaining two-thirds of the streets in town are either poor or very poor, and these have significant financial consequences. So next slide. So let me share with you what this PCI numbers mean. Here's a road, the P C R of ninety, this is Fifth Avenue, and you can see it's in very good shape, there's no, no cracks at all, looks great. We would probably not do anything with this road except, you know, enjoy it. Next slide. As time goes on, and if we don't look after our streets, cracks begin to develop, that's natural. It's a, a, a result of age, it's a result of the traffic that travels on the streets, and in this particular example, this is, let me see here, quickly, Ventura Street. You can see that it's been sealed, the, the cracks have been sealed, but it's beginning to, it's, it's still in good shape, but it's beginning to show some wear and tear. And up in the distance, you can see some patches there as well. Next slide. So if we continue not doing anything, this is San Joaquin, and here you can clearly see now lots of cracks beginning to appear. And these cracks are particularly important to, to us as pavement engineers. The pattern of these cracks, they look like the alligator skin, uh, skin of a, and so we call them alligator cracking. And what that indicates to us is that these are actually the beginnings of structural failure. In other words, the roads, the, these cracks extend all the way down to the base, and the, the repair or the appropriate rehabilitation strategy for this is going to be quite expensive. Usually it's remove and replace the asphalt layer. Last, next slide. And then finally, if we continue not doing anything, you can see on this picture here, this is the Stanislaw Street, that the cracks begin to widen up. It's actually not quite pervasive, it's at the entire, and the edge to edge of the road. Here, we're now probably looking at some sort of reconstruction. So I want to pause here quickly and just see if you have any questions so far. Okay, next slide. So how does Avonel compare with other cities in the area? What we did is, because we did look at other agencies, smaller agencies in, in the valley, in the surrounding areas, we wanted to share with you what they are, and you can see like Hanford, for instance, or Lemoore, they're definitely a, a little bit on the higher side. And it's unfortunate, you know, Avonel at forty-seven is kind of on the low end of the scale here. The, go ahead and click it. I also wanted to share with you what the statewide average is, so there's five hundred and thirty-nine cities and counties in California. And what we've done is, in a recent update of the statewide needs analysis, we took. we took all the data from all five hundred and thirty-nine cities, we aggregated them, averaged them out, and the statewide average is sixty-six. So unfortunately, I have to say, Avonale is not in a good place because we're definitely below the state average, about twenty points below. Next slide. So the next step in our study was, you know, let's start identifying different ways to fix the streets. And there are three kind of categories. The first is what we call preventive maintenance. And preventive maintenance is what we want to try to do in your good roads. Remember, one-third of your roads are in good shape. So we would encourage you to preserve the good roads as much as you can, use things like s- 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 lorry seals and cave seals. And then as it, as they get progressively worse, look at a variety of treatment strategies, milling and overlaying it using rubberized hot mix, cold in place recycling, which we definitely advocate. It would be reusing the materials, it's sustainable, it's it's cheaper and it's mu- it's very cost effective to the conventional methods. And then finally, if you had to do reconstruction, again, we would consider a full debt reclamation because you would be able to reuse the material in place and again, save some money that way. So these are sort of the strategies we looked at. And next slide. This, again, you know, why would we want to do a preventive maintenance? Just to kind of re- reiterate what I just said. We want to keep good roads goo- good. One of the whole policy points about the SB one funding was to try and encourage a preservation program in, in all the agencies in California. So we, we, we recommend, of course, following the pavement management recommendations as much as possible. Next slide. So what we end up with is a chart that looks like this. And you can think of this as the line, the black line that you see represents the life cycle of a street. We start out at a hundred, you know, it's a regular street. And then over time, it's kind of slowly deteriorated. It stays in the green, it slowly deteriorates to the blue category, which is a fair. And at this point, the curve drops fairly steep. It's a thirty, you know, we call it, you, you almost like jumping off the cliff. And the reason we, 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 this is important is because look at the costs associated with this. If a street is in good shape, to do a crack and s- s- lorry seal, it's only about four dollars a square yard, fairly inexpensive. But if we let the street fail all the way to the red, if we don't do anything and let it drop to the red category, now we're at sixty-nine dollars a square yard. And that's, you know, almost fifteen times more than what the cost of a preventive maintenance is. Yeah, I, I want to use the analogy, you know, of a car. I have a Toyota. It's a, it's about fourteen years old. It's in good shape. I'm hitting about two hundred thousand miles on it, but it runs beautifully. And as a car owner, I think, you know, we really have two choices, right? I mean, every three thousand miles, I can go get an oil change, get a regular tune-up every fifteen thousand miles or so. And like, like this, my faithful Toyota, it's going to take me many, many years and serve me well. Another option I could do is I could not maintain mine. I could just drive it into the ground and then go out and buy a new car. Now intuitively, we know that the most cost-effective strategy is to take care of the streets and the car that we have. And that's really what the point of this chart is, is that again, to, to, to bring to you the point that we do have good streets in Avonale. Let's put some money aside. Let's go ahead and take care of them and preserve them. Not ignoring all the bad streets in town, but also, you know, trying to do a hybrid kind of a strategy. Next slide. So the, 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 the last thing that we did, the city staff asked us to look at is how much money do we need? How much money do we need to improve the conditions? I keep, go ahead and click through the animation. And how much do we need to maintain the conditions? So the next few slides are a series of charts that I just want to share with you. Go ahead. Here, the, the first thing we, city staff asked us to look at is, let's find out how much it costs to maintain it at its current condition. We know it's not great, it's forty-seven, but let's just find out how much it would cost. And there's two pieces of information on this chart. The line that you see that says forty-seven, that's the pavement condition index or the PCI. And we're trying to maintain that. However, even though we maintain the PCI at a fairly constant rate, what those little red bars below, what that shows is the deferred maintenance or the, well, another way to think of it is the unfunded backlog. In other words, this is work that I need to do, but I don't have the money to do it. And that unfunded backlog is growing. It grows from about nine million dollars right now to, it doubles to twenty-one million in ten very short years. This is a concern because if you think of an iceberg, what the PCI tells you is the tip of the iceberg. But underneath the water line with seven eighths of the iceberg is, that's a deferred maintenance. And that is something that I want to make sure that you are aware of, that deferring streets is going to cost more in, in the future, significantly more. The next scenario that city staff asked us to look at was, well, let's say, what can we do to improve? Let's not, let's not be satisfied with the status quo. Let's say we just want to improve it to fifty-five, which is, you know, fairly modest. But it would bring us into the, the fair category, improve us a little bit. And you can see again, the PCI improves now to fifty-five over ten years. And what we can do with the different maintenance, it, it's a little bit less, it's about eighteen million dollars, but it would require about one point two four million dollars to take us there. Next slide. Here's a, a quick PCI map that kind of gives you an idea. And the point is that the red and the orange streets are the ones that are in poor condition. The green and the blues are in good condition. You can see you do have a handful of green and blues. And this is what it looks like today after we completed our field surveys. Next slide. On the scenario one, which is the maintaining it at forty-seven at nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, what the program is trying to do is preserve your good roads. So you can see now there's a sprinkling of green streets in there, but the number of red streets have, has also increased. And now you're actually resulting in somewhat of a two-tiered system, a very good roads and not so good roads. And the second map is of scenario two. And here you can see a little bit, a small difference is that there's a little bit more green streets in there with that extra quarter million dollars a year. Next slide. So another way to look at it, and go ahead and, go ahead and do the animation. Another way to look at it is, is the first pie chart again, is just kind of to reiterate, right? We, we have about a third of good and very good roads and the remaining two-thirds is poor and very poor. And then when you look at scenario one, we're able, both scenario one and two, obviously improved the very good roads to a little bit more than half and it eats away at the red and yellow categories. It's actually eating away mostly at the yellow category because it's still cheaper to do that than it is to attack the red. So you can see sort of that, that financial impact, the, the, the impact of those funding dollars. Last slide. So really, you know, our conclusions are, you've got a pretty hefty asset value in the street system and about forty million dollars or so. Unfortunately, the existing condition is it's poor, the average condition is poor. It doesn't mean that every street is poor. You do have good streets again. I want to reemphasize that. But the average is, is, is not great. And we do recommend that, you know, as much as possible, to try and find some funding to improve the roads. It will gradually increase and, and by the end of ten years, you know, half, more than half of your roads will be considered in very good condition. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Do you have any questions? So, oh, improving to fifty-five will be your best recommendation, but also looking at that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Could you say that again?
So your recommendation would be to increase from forty-seven to fifty-five?
Yes, as much as possible. I, I think we, we need to start attacking the street system and improving it as much as we can.
And for that, you will have a plan to go into the low level or low maintenance streets in, within the city? Is that, is that includes the Avonale cut off, I believe, three, four miles out there that need the a repair too?
Um, I'll have to take a look. I don't recall offhand which streets were included, but it is in our final report.
Yeah, maybe that green line.
Yeah.
Margo, this is Fernando. Could you talk about the pavement management system and how that, that would help the city kind of prioritize improvement projects?
So one of the things that the pavement management system does is it tries to, there's an algorithm that's built into it. And what it tries to do is it tries to get the biggest bang for the buck. For every dollar that you have, what is the best way of spending it and so that you get an improvement in the PCI? When we ran this analysis, we put in one point two four million or thereabouts and, and said, okay, you know, pick the, the streets that are going to benefit the most from this dollars. And what are those streets? And they'll come up with the maps that you saw. But there's many other ways you could do it. You could say that, well, you know, since our arterials are in pretty good shape, they're at seventy right now, we might only want to spend a certain portion of the budget. And, and maybe we, we look at grants, we try to find other state monies that would be eligible to spend on those streets. And that's what many cities do. And then look at the, the local roads. There are also small cities that have looked at some sort of a sales tax of some kind or, or tax measures, ballot measures that would be focused mostly on trying to improve your, your residential streets. So multiple ways of attacking it. What the software does is allow staff to be able to run a multiplicity of scenarios, as many as you want. I mean, you know, when we were working with Fresno, they have a me- measure C that's going to sunset, I think in twenty twenty-six, twenty-five or twenty-six. And, and we ran scenarios for them to show what, what the impacts are when the measure is not renewed or if it is renewed, how much money is going to be spent. So you, you can model many of these sort of simulations if you like.
And this is Fernando. Again, thank you, Margo. I just wanted to give the council a little bit of background as well that this study, this report was, which you'll, you'll receive a copy of, was funded by K-CAG, Kings County Association of Governments. And the, the software that Margo mentioned is a system that staff, public work staff and community development staff will be trained on using to be able to generate those, those reports and, and use that algorithm to help the city prioritize projects to be able to maintain the, the quality of the roads going forward. So it's a, it's a very expensive project, but fortunately, K-CAG was able to find some money to be able to hire NTE and, and, and T did a great job and, and taking images of every single road within our network for us to be able to set a baseline.
My, my question would be for Don, just for, for my, for my knowledge, what's our average amount of money that we receive for, to improve our streets, you know, like per year? Just, just an average, you know, it doesn't need to be a set number.
We receive approximately twenty-seven thousand a month. That's the gas cap. We're averaging about that same amount for the RMRA. So we're looking at probably fifty-six, around fifty-six thousand a month.
So that would be like the, the seven hundred, ten hundred thousand dollars.
We also use money that's came from the LTA, I'm in red.
Yes.
Which is very significant, can be up to four hundred, up to six hundred thousand.
So we have approximately like one point two, one point two million dollars a year, average, just to improve our streets?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, Ms. Margaret, which, 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 wh- 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 what is your suggestion for, you know, for our streets? I see that there's the s- s- lorry seal, the full debt reclamation. Now, what, what is something that you would recommend for Avonale to, you know, to start doing if, if we, you know, if there was a decision to prioritize certain streets, what would be your recommendation?
Well, certainly I would recommend that you look at your good roads and try to institute some sort of a seal program, a s- s- lorry seal or a cave seal program and, and, and perhaps an overlay, start looking at overlays or recycling for your other streets that are in good shape. I would also suggest one thing. It's very difficult for a small city like Avonale to be able to attract bids that are competitive. And, and, and the reason I say that is because the quantities that, that you would be able to put together in a program is not going to be very big. If, to the extent possible, if you can partner with the county, if the county, for instance, is going to be doing a keeps you program and you throw in five streets and they've got a hundred, well, you, you kind of take advantage of the, the economies of scale that they would have. Many, many more small cities, we're trying to encourage them to do that because I think you can help stretch the dollars a little bit further that way.
Thank you.
Okay, so per Alex's question, we have about one point two million a year for the streets. And according to that slide, it's going to be about one point two four million a year. So that four hundred thousand that is missing, is that going to be taxes on the citizens of Avonale?
What, I don't think, does it depend vastly on, on how much money we, we, we get per year, right?
It's correct. Correct. And it, it depends on, gas tax is based on what you pay at the gas pump. The RMRA money, which is the road maintenance and repair account. That money is from vehicle licensing. So it has, it started out a very small amount. The first time we got a payment on that, it was about two thousand dollars. So it's about twenty-seven thousand dollars now a month, give or take. And hopefully, once people are back on the road and traveling more, we'll see an increase on that. So it may just be that some projects get pushed out or maintenance gets pushed out because the funding isn't there, which is why we, what we're, what we've currently done is we've been trying to have enough money to be able to do a project that needed to be done, such as our San Joaquin project, that should be starting shortly.
Fernando, do you have any more, any more comments?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
You don't have any more questions? That concludes your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we're going to item number eight, public comments announcement in our scheduled process. Would you please read the statements?
Any person may directly address the city council agency at this time on any item on the agenda, any other items of interest to the public that is with the subject manager, district, or the city council director, and state law prohibits any member of the city council agency from commenting or acting on matters not in the agenda. Three minutes are allowed per person.
Thank you. With that being said, do we have any comments from the public, community members?
Uh, yes, I actually have a comment. Hi, everybody. My name is Abraham. I'm a P A student at Torrey University and I was a resident in Avonale for close to thirteen years. Uh, my question is, why is Avonale so low in the PCI street ranking with a big budget dedicating to fixing the streets?
Well, as you know, the, and the public comments, we're not allowed by state law to answer any questions at this time. But we will, the red staff, who probably have a question in the near future.
Thank you.
Regarding how much money is spent every year in Avonale to repair some of the street projects.
Anytime they also, I think, you know, any questions can be also emailed, emailed to, to the city clerk and, and, you know, we can provide answers that, that way. Because, you know, items on the agenda, we can provide answers.
Yeah, all these questions, let's stay for the record. So your question will be considered and answered hopefully soon. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jose Valencia, just to make sure this proposed is just for street roads, not for sidewalk maintenance.
Hi, good evening, this is Veronica Aguirre. I just wanted to bring to your attention one more time, the visual berm coming from the Avonale landfill. I, I really hope that as councilmen, you will consider looking into this issue and, and looking at the CalRecycle website, seeing the report that was issued by CalReci, to CalRecycle by the L E A. It, and George Anderson, the manager of the landfill, said that when he gave his report in regards to the berm on August thirteenth, that he notified the council that, that they were going, that the waste was going to be visible. So my, I would hope that when you guys hear these types of things, you, something that would come to mind might be, well, how is this going to affect the public's health? Having waste so close to the community, and then now they're bringing in loads of dirt to cover it, and not even knowing exactly, I mean, is this dirt being tested? We're right in the hotspot of valley fever, we're right in the middle of a pandemic. People in this area are known to have respiratory issues, and yet no one's asking any of these, any of these types of these questions. And, and I think that that would be the responsibility of the city council to look into it and to look into it states in their own, maybe even look at the contract and some of the issues. They all state, like I said, you can go onto the CalRecycle website and look and see what it is under their visual mitigation refuge filling. And see, and maybe you can ask and support the community and make decisions based off of how it's going to affect the community. You know, I mean, I, I think it's wonderful that you're looking at a ten year plan of how the roads and everything is, you know, could be taken care of, where we're going to find the money. But how about we take a look at what the problem is now? And the problem is now, is that people are worried about their health. And, and anything that we can count, we can do to try to make something happen that can alleviate some of this concern to the community, I think you guys need to ask questions. And that's why you are voted in as community leaders. And, and we look to you guys to make, are the ones that have access to all this information, access to being able to speak to them and making decisions based on what's good for the community. And, you know, and I think it's, it's, you know, I'm thinking about all that, all those particulate matter, you know, all the methane, everything that's coming in, and we have all these different housing. Where now we're building houses like right down the street, and yeah, we're excited, yay, you know, we're growth and all this stuff. But think about the health of all these people, you know, and people could turn around and say, well, if you don't like it, move. Think about it, I've heard in so many of different times, we're in a disadvantaged community, we're actually getting money to be a disadvantaged community, and you want to tell poor people to move? And right down that street is a number of low income houses, low income apartments, rent that's based off of your income, so you really want to tell somebody that may be paying twenty two dollars a month that I think you're going to have to move because your kid is sick and is having some issues. Maybe you're just going to have to move, or just deal with it. So I really hope, and I, I keep telling you guys this, and I keep coming in because it's been since December that the community has brought this to council's attention, and it has yet to be put on an agenda. It has yet to be discussed, and I really think an action needs to be taken. Give the community what they need, some answers. They've asked for transparency, they've asked for a study, they've asked for a number of things, and not once has that ever been addressed, thank you very much.
Actually have a comment to back off Veronica. Regarding the landfill, there is a huge, that is a huge public issue that not only impacts the air quality, the water quality, but more importantly fetal development, pre and, and post. And I've seen a lot of studies, I could actually send it to, to the council regarding this. And like Veronica said, the citizens are in charge, you guys need to bring this issue up. It is very important.
Any other more comments?
We have a comment from Juan Conde. The community should be, the community should elect the mayor, and the community wanted free COVID nineteen testing, but yet council denied it.
Thanks, any other comments?
There, there is a free COVID testing at the Avonale High School every Thursday. So next Thursday, if you would like to take a COVID test with or without symptoms, you can at the Avonale High School.
Any other comments? So I believe Angie is taking notes and I'd just like to suggest that maybe council should get our list of the questions because sometimes it's kind of hard to hear them correctly, to understand our whole issue. So maybe we can get a, a report. For the next, well, when we get our mail, we can include a list of the questions so we can actually see community concerns, so we can actually.
Maybe a suggestion, but including the policy in place where all the comments can be a week before council. That way we have a, 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 that way we have their process through the city council.
So then, do we need a resolution to do that? Does everybody agree with that direction? Yes, Pablo? The council giving direction to get a summary of the community concerns. Okay, thank you, with that, we will close item number eight, public comments. And we will move over to item number nine, which is public hearings, so we have one. So we'll move over to item number ten, all business. Ten A will be to consider second reading and adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash oh six, which is adding, adding chapter twelve to title four of the Avonale municipal code relating to price gouging and the advantage of consumers. So we're going to do discussion first.
Mayor members and council, at the last meeting on September tenth, the second reading, or I'm sorry, the, the ordinance was introduced and waived for ordinance number two thousand twenty dash zero six, adding chapter twelve to title four of the Avonale municipal code relating to price gouging and advantage of consumers. And staff's recommendation is to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty dash zero six that will be published in the Hanford Sentinel and enacted within thirty days.
Okay, so discussion, are there any comments regarding this? Nothing, yeah, nothing is, is stand, we can continue.
Yes.
Do you have a public comment too, before we adopt this resolution? Yeah, we have our motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash oh six.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh six.
I'll second it. Can you work for, please?
Hi.
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 Let it show that it's possible, for. So ten D will be to consider second reading and adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash oh seven. The city council of the city of Avonale taking action June twenty fifth, twenty twenty to make mandatory all commercial businesses, store, home and all working places or business within the city limits of Avonale to wear appropriate facial covering. And further require the public, customer, patrons, wear facial covering while in stores, places of business due to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Once again, this was brought to council at the last meeting, September tenth. It was an urgency item back in June twenty fifth. And council introduced and waived the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero seven. And to make mandatory all commercial businesses, store owned and other works, working in places of business within the city limits to wear appropriate facial covering. By motion, we are recommending that we waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero seven. And it will be published in the Hanford Sentinel and enacted within thirty days.
Okay, with that, we're going to discussion, are there any comments?
Do, do we have any chance, the current report from court enforcement as far as compliance or non-compliance?
I have not received a report myself, no.
Can we request one for the upcoming meeting? Okay.
There are, there are discussions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to class ordinance twenty twenty dash oh seven as recommended?
Our motion.
Your motion, our council, we have a second.
I'll second it.
First and second, can you work for, please?
Hi.
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 And do they show plus four? So we're going to item ten C, which is consider entering into an agreement with the MacLeod Watts Inc., which is the actual valuation services. Show us more about this item.
Yes, I can, this was brought to council the last meeting, unfortunately I had a family emergency, I had to leave. What this is, is actuarial valuation services of our post employment benefits, which is required under G A S B seventy five for our financial statements. It is required information. And what they do is take our, the cost of our insurance benefits for our retirees and put that into a formula and come up with what the cost is. And then we put that information into our financial statements. And the Cloud World Watts has been the actual real service that we have used for the last several years. They were recommended with R M A, and they went out on their own, out from under what was then Dick Moore. And they had given us a updated actuarial agreement due to some changes in reporting years. And so they brought this agreement to cost not more than seven thousand one hundred dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty one, the current fiscal year, and then two thousand one hundred for the following fiscal year, at which time they will give us a new proposal for services.
Is, is there a reason why there's so much difference between the first reading?
Because the second year is basically just an update. They already have all of the parameters set up, and then they just put in new numbers for that next year. So they don't have to reprogram and do a whole compilation of information.
With that, will it be possible to go into the previous for three years?
All right, well, due to the fact that the G A S B, which is the government and all accounting standards board, has a tendency to decide to change things every couple of years. It's much easier to do it two years and then have to modify based on any changes that's resonated to the reporting standard.
Can you say what's going on there, who are you speaking to?
Yes.
Any discussion at this time? Be no discussion, do we have a motion to adopt if? Resolution number twenty eighteen forty two?
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash forty two.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
First and second, can you work for, please?
How about Fernando?
Hi.
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 And two, for the two hundred and two, three, one, one, two. So we'll move over to item ten D, which is consider extending local emergency declare on March twenty four, twenty twenty.
Yes, mayors, mayors, members of council, I, I grant you the extension of the local emergency resolution number twenty twenty dash fourteen for the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is required to be reviewed at each meeting or within the expiration of the twenty first day, to be renewed for an additional twenty one days, unless a council member, a member of public requests that the council convene to consider the ongoing emergency resolution, at which time a special meeting would be scheduled. And this is a discussion action item.
COVID nineteen is still out there, I think we should.
Do you have a motion to extend it?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to extend for twenty one days.
I'll second it.
First and second, can you work for, please?
Hi.
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 Yeah, joy, thank you. So we're going to item eleven, new business, which is to consider attending to the agreement for county fire services. At this time, I would like to ask council to table this item. At this time, I would like to ask, uh, council to table this item. I believe, uh, we still, uh, do not have a municipal unofficial.
That's correct.
I believe their, uh, the fire chief, uh, did retire or resigned?
Um, he retired and Bill Lynch, the past fire chief is back as interim and helps the season retire.
So I believe, uh, they haven't had a chance to go over the new agreement, correct?
That's correct.
We probably need more time and. So, uh, make a motion to table this item until next, uh, consider council meeting.
I'll have a second. I'll have a second.
First and second.
Who, who wants to answer?
To table this item.
To table this item.
Any motion?
And I second you.
And you said, you second?
Yeah.
From yours.
How about you, Nada?
Hi.
Mayor Paul Tenfondo.
Hi.
Mayor Paul Tenfondo.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, let it show that, uh, we have a table this item and to let city council. We're going to item twelve, which is correspondents, announcements in closing comments. Yes, we do. Believe we both, uh, we. So at this time, we'll take up the, uh, the letter, the request for, um, to send a letter of support for West, Westland Water District. So ready to do at the beginning of the meeting. So, uh, what we're going to be doing is signing a letter to support. Okay, that, uh, we will see.
Do you need to allow the mayor to send the letter of support with the two thousand second?
And this, um, this letter of support would be to, um, to support the application of funding, right?
Hmm.
Which ultimately.
Only that, right?
Okay.
Do you have a motion to, uh, city council to send a letter of?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second it.
First and second, Angie work for please?
Hi.
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 Okay, let it show that we would be sending the letter of support to the Westland Water District to help them in their funding application. Okay, with that, we're going to, uh, announcement, do you have any announcement? So we're going to closing comments on.
Yes, sir.
Closing time for that.
I have none, thank you.
Any closing comments from legal counsel? Council member Hernandez, closing comments.
I, I have a few, you know, of course, um, I noticed during the, the beginning of the meeting that there is no, no translation services and I know that we have been going on through, you know, a lot of changes and, um, a lot of, um, you know, things in city hall. But I do think it's very important that we, you know, provide translation services to our community on a, you know, meeting to meeting basis. And perhaps we can look into, you know, if the translator is willing and able to enter into an agreement with us to, you know, be able to provide the services, um, at any given time that we have a, a meeting or special meeting. The second, you know, this will allow the community to participate in, in, in Spanish as well and understand what's going on in our community. The second thing, and I think this is a very important, um, comment, rather than a comment, is a formal invitation to the school district to, you know, work together with the city council and strengthen our relationship. I spoke with our current city manager Melissa a few days back and she gave me the background of how, um, city council and the school district used to work together and the great benefits that the community gets from this. So I think it's time the, you know, we opened that conversation again and, uh, you know, they used to meet on a quarterly basis, I believe, but of course this is, these are things that can be discussed, but, you know, rather than, not having communication and being on the same page, I would like to formally invite the school district to, you know, work together with the city council for any issues. You know, and, and the last thing would be, you know, to continue to encourage the community to participate in our meetings, uh, you know, with, with translation and, uh, you know, this is the only way that we can have things, uh, you know, change and, and, uh, you know, participate in our, in our, uh, local government, uh, just participate in our meetings. That's all.
I would like to, uh, welcome Moses Diaz, a new city attorney for the public. And the ones that don't know, yesterday we had a, a special meeting and council decided to hire him full time. So we're looking, uh, also on hiring a new city manager. We'll be announcing our new city manager hopefully Sep- September thirtieth. And, uh, I just want to let the community know that we're listening to their concerns. We will be, uh, working on many, many, uh, issues that the community has and, uh, we just need time to reorganize and direct staff to prioritize, uh, concerns. I'm sure everybody agrees that I will be looking into the landfill. And, uh, I just want to announce that I've been speaking with Samir, a credit director of, uh, Southakini air district and, uh, he offered to come into Old Town, have a meeting with the general manager of the landfill, have a meeting, open meeting with the community and bring other entities that can be, um, can be answers to the concerns and questions of the community. And, uh, see what we can do, you know, within our limits, what we can do to improve in the concerns of the community. We're here to, um, work together with churches, good districts, community and staff and other, uh, cities within our, within our, like, to me, like, you know, thankfully more. The thing that, uh, we need to start home, get out of now, you know, in a, you know, pretty, uh, aggressive movement, but we work together, accomplish what we need to accomplish. Resolve the things we need to accomplish and, um, set the basis to, uh, get an understanding that, uh, concerns, the best way to resolve them is by communicating, finding solutions, agreeing. Sometimes it's, you just have to go one way or another, my way, your way. I think we need to get together, accomplish what is, uh, the best for the community. You know, we cannot please, uh, or do everything at once. And what I like, somebody else may not like, what you may like, I may not like, but, uh, I think we all need to, we all live in the same community and we all have issues and we all have concerns and it's things to agree that, uh, we need to resolve it together in a friendly, respectful way. And, uh, transparency will be our goal. And I believe that, uh, we're in the right track, that we, we're very happy that the community is giving us input, their concerns and, uh, you know, this is some, that's, that's why we're here. We're elected to serve the community, to listen to you. And I think, uh, you know, we will be working together. Hopefully, you know, we're right now kind of tied up with meetings, open meetings, but, uh, I'm sure we'll find ways to communicate and start doing maybe meetings at the park, open spaces. Little by little, I think we can accomplish more by just staying quiet, not doing anything. It's difficult times, but I also want to say that, uh, now we're moving forward even with COVID nineteen. I mean, we just approved resolutions for businesses to protect our community. Fines will be implemented too for gouging. So I think right now we, there, there are many, many difficulties. I don't know if, um, communities are aware, but, uh, you know, we're in the red utility bills not being paid, goes to a hundred thousand dollars. So those are issues, concerns, and I believe that, uh, we'll need to, uh, gonna look at what we can do. Uh, we'll be, uh, we'll be sending information regarding KCU, KCU helping, uh, to pay utility bills and they actually county has, uh, get aside a reasonable amount of money to help people who has been affected by COVID nineteen, like to pay for rent, buy groceries, pay utility bills. So, uh, we directed council, um, council directed staff today to, uh, that makes, uh, bill payments to send that information and target those individuals who need, uh, the income of the bills. We're here to help, you know, uh, we can open the, uh, tech center and start, you know, helping people fill applications or do whatever they need to, to get access to those funds. So with that, uh, I will close, uh, city council meeting tomorrow.